Okay, I think we're ready. I hereby call the Board of Trustees meeting, regular meeting of the Board of Trustees to order for our November 18th, 2025 meeting at 6:00 P. M. Okay, if you would all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you. Okay, let's begin. We will begin with call to order. And roll call, conflict of interest. Trustee Sikkenga. Trustee Sanders. Trustee Nolte. Trustee Abbott.
Present, no conflict.
Treasurer Metz.
Present, not conflict.
Myself, Clerk Stambulalies, present, no conflict.
Lonnie Scott, no.
I have a letter from Supervisor Scott. He is not able to attend this evening. I will read that now. Good evening, everyone. I am very sorry I cannot be with you tonight. I've been fighting what appears to be a stomach flu since about 3:30 this morning. I had hoped that I would rebound enough to run the meeting, but I'm feeling worse this evening and now have a fever. Last thing I wanted to do was pass anything along to any of you. Thank you to Clerk Stambulalies for stepping in to run the meeting. I also want to extend my appreciation to Trustee Nolte and Trustee Sikkenga for all of their work on the Single Hauler Trash Project. I'd also ask if the board agrees that the RFP preference discussion be tabled until I am back, as it is not time-sensitive. Thank you all for understanding. Lonnie. Before the approval of the agenda, I would like to give a couple changes. You have a new agenda in front of you, and those changes will be item number eight A, which will consist of considering, I'm sorry, consideration of entering into closed session to discuss open purpose of a property, as well with moving to table action item seven C to the December Board of Trustees meeting. If someone would like to make a motion and support.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a support and a second. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Approval of the agenda passes. Next, we'll move on to call for public comment. There are any, please state your name, address, and if you would limit your comment to three minutes, that would be appreciated.
Train this again. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I rise this evening to thank you for your support and allowing me to attend the Planning Commission Retreat in Frankenmuth two weeks ago. Two of the most productive days in a MTA retreat that I've ever experienced. I just want to say a heartfelt thank you because I came back loaded with information that I hope to use to hopefully make this Planning Commission a little more reactive to responsibilities to the Township Board and the Township. And also an extra special thank you to our office manager, Ms. Edwards. She took care of the logistics for this for me, and it went as smooth as it was possible to do. And having said that, I do have one request of the Township Board. I have noticed that on our webpage, Planning Commission, the email address number, email addresses of the Planning Commissioners are listed. I would respectfully ask that those email addresses be removed because they will only foster ex parte contact between members of the public and the members of the Planning Commission, which is forbidden by Michigan law. We have, if you look at that webpage, below the listing of the email addresses, there are four paragraphs of information that are very good for discouraging that contact, but those, that discouragement could be made stronger because for a person to contact a Planning Commission member, that provides that member with information that the rest of the Planning Commission does not have, and that could influence a decision or cause a Planning Commission member to have to recuse him or herself because they have contact that the other members of the Planning Commission do not have. Again, if someone wants to contact the Planning Commission, the only proper way to do it is through our able Director of Planning and Zoning, Mr. Ryer, or a letter to the Township in general, but not for direct personal communication between any members of the public and the Planning Commission regarding any agenda item that might be before us. And having said that, thank you for your time, and again, thank you for the opportunity to attend the retreat.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to number six of the agenda, the consent agenda. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll move. I'll second. Excuse me.
We have a motion and a support. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we'll move on to the Dexter Township Board of Trustees' action items. The first item on or the action item will be the Acceptative Financial Transactions, which consists of the Check Disbursement and Revenue and Expenditure Report. Would someone like to make a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and support. Is there any discussion?
Yeah. So I did want to, I did have a couple of questions, which the clerk very kindly prepared an answer in advance. And one in particular I wanted to note was that there was an $82,000 or $82,500 check that was cut to an individual. And I thought that that would bear explaining at the public meeting, and basically it's a performance bond. So when somebody wants to do some work on that house, they go through our planning department. Sometimes depending on the work, they have to provide a performance bond, which is a guarantee that, which is a financial guarantee that they're going to properly execute the work that they've been authorized by the township to do. Once that work is properly completed, then the check is returned to the individual. And I did tell the clerk, I'm very pleased to see those agency fund reports in the, because for long time that those are agency funds, they're not general fund revenue, they're not, they're not our millages. So I'm pleased to see those, but I just thought that large transaction should be explained. Did I, and did I explain it?
You did. You did very well. So that's exactly what the family did. They put their funds into an escrow account until they had matters addressed at their house and finalized, and then that, those funds were reimbursed to the homeowner, so those items were in satisfactory completion. And it was a good call bringing it up because it was a large check.
The other question that I had, that I think there is repeating to in the public session is why the revenue for elections was a little less than the expenses for elections. What I understand from the clerk is that the remaining expenses will be reimbursed and that that bill is being.
Any further discussion? Alrighty, seeing none. All those in favor of accepting the financial transactions, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will move on to action item B, which is the recommendation from the Planning Commission. If you turn to page 25 in your board packet, this is for the Planning Commission's recommendation for Dexter Township regarding zoning ordinance amendment for electronic messaging signs. And I will give the microphone on over to our Director of Planning and Zoning, Fletcher Ryer, to explain, and if anyone has any questions.
Sure. Good evening, Board of Trustees. Fletcher Ryer, Director of Planning and Zoning. Today, we have in front of you a Planning Commission recommendation to amend Dexter Township's electronic messaging sign ordinance, which is regulated by section 19.06 of the zoning ordinance. Currently, Dexter Township has one of the most restrictive electronic sign ordinances in the region. Currently, we require one hour between each message on the electronic messaging sign. The Planning Commission recommended to reduce that to 30 seconds, which is more in line with our neighboring townships and cities. Staff and the Planning Commission reviewed this ordinance proposal or proposed amendment and have come to the conclusion that it's compatible with the master plan, complies with state and federal laws, and aligns with township standards and regional practices. At this time, I can take any questions you may have about that proposal.
I have one. I'm just curious how you landed on 30 seconds because it sounds like most of the townships are like six seconds, 10 seconds. I'm just curious about, I know it's a big leap from an hour. So, you know, maybe that was part of it, but I'm curious about your, you know, thinking there.
Sure. I think Commissioner Straub did a good job at the Planning Commission meeting, using a scientific method to get it down to 30 seconds. The Commission was leaning towards a minute duration, but we realized at the speed of 45 miles an hour on McGregor, a minute really doesn't do much for the driver. 30 seconds seems to be more in line with the speed that vehicles are driving down the road to maybe see two messages at the very most. But at that speed, you would be lucky to see any more than the two messages on the screen. And the 30 seconds, it's kind of sits nice in the middle of regional practices.
Okay. Can I ask, how many do we have?
The township has three.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, four, four electronic messaging signs. One is a little dated and doesn't have the capacity to have detailed messages on the screen. But the reason this all came up is due to some enforcement issues. The existing signs in the township were not adhering to the hour standard, and we did receive a couple calls about that.
Changes to the Dexter Township Electronic Message Sign Euration Standards Ordinance as recommended by.
I'll second.
We have support and a second. All those in favor of excuse me. All those in favor of accepting these changes to our electric sign, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Alrighty, motion passes. Now. Sure.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Now we will move on to action item C, which is on page 31 of your Board of Trustees' packet. It's an approval for Supervisor Scott to sign and send a letter to race organizers for Road to Hell event.
Wasn't this the one we moved? We didn't.
This was the one we discussed last month.
Oh, it's not the one we moved. Okay, then I got that wrong. Okay.
Sure.
So there is, there are different race organizers putting on races all the time in Dexter Township and all over the county. But there's no, there's no county ordinance and regulating or mandating notification of the Sheriff's Department and the Road Commission when a race takes place, although best practice, many do, and it is a best practice, but this race organizer only notified the city of Chelsea. And it was a multi-jurisdictional race. I think it went over like 70 or 80 miles and something, and like a dozen or half. Many, many municipalities were involved, and I think two counties, so Washington and Michigan County. And you all may remember that there was, I remember the public, you know, spoke about this, Steve Crumbberg last month. So a woman was struck, so they did not close. There was no traffic control at all, no signage for cars or anything on North Territorial. And the race crossed Toma at North Territorial without any kind of signage or notification to drivers to look out for the riders. And so a woman was struck by it, and she's still in hospital, and she's not, you know, she's now able to walk, but she still can't speak. She, you know, so it was a serious injury. She wasn't killed, but still in the ICU, and it's great tragedy. So, so there's some organizing and thinking going on about how the county can regulate events like this to ensure participant safety. The township doesn't particularly have a role in that. And so Lonnie, after speaking, I believe to our attorney and others, decided that a letter asking for the race organizers to notify the Sheriff's Department and the Road Commission is basically the best recourse that we have at the township level at this time. And we didn't want to do nothing in light of the severity of the injury and what like the failure on the part of the race organizers to do the. So he's just asking, because the statute requires approval for the supervisor to sign. But like this, he's asking for all of your approval to sign this letter to the race.
Especially since it happened in our community.
Anybody have any question?
No. I think it's pretty clear.
Would someone like to begin with a motion to approve the letter to be sent?
I make a motion to approve the supervisor's sign and send the letter to the race organizers of Road to Hell event.
I'll second it.
Second by Sanders. We have a motion and support. All those in favor of the supervisor signing and sending a letter to race organizers, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next, we will move on to action item D, which will be Single Hauler Trash Contract. That will begin on page 32, but there is updated material that was put out for you.
I'll explain it.
Now I'll hand this on over to Trustee Nolte.
Here goes the big one for the night. When I thought we have, we'll have two different motions on this topic. One, to accept or not accept the contract with Waste Management. And then if it is accepted, then we move into implementation, but that's a separate subject from just the contract. So on your desk, I left two pieces of information. First one is version 10 of the contract. We had some changes today, which I'll walk through. And the other thing is a summary, the BOT summary that I wrote up. It's dated up here November 18th, just to show the changes that happened in the contract today. So feel free to ask questions. We also have Matt Nod from recycle.com, who worked on our committee, is here as a general, he's worked through the project from the very start of the RFP, and we also have Chantel from Waste Management, where we can do a Q and A. So I'll just start walking through the particulars and then we'll go for it. Is that good? Everybody? So we started this project a long time ago with community engagement and surveys and coffee chats and starting, and our RFP went out in January or February, I think it was February, came back in March or so, and we've been working through it. And we are now where we are. And the summary that I gave from the November 18th kind of just gives a general wrap-up of the big topics. It comes in with the quarterly rates for trash, recycle, and yard waste. It shows that each homeowner would get a free bulk item once per month, and it has to be sized to their, it's a four by four by two, isn't it? For the bulk rate, additional bulk rate items during the month would be $25. It's up to the resident's responsibility to schedule that on their website. Christmas trees would be picked up for the first two weeks in January, again with advanced scheduling on the website. So if you choose to get rid of your tree that way. The snowbird clauses for pausing is, was one of the things that changed today, and if you look in V10, you'll see a little highlighted part on page eight. Snowbirds will be able to pause, anybody will be able to pause their account from anywhere from one to nine months, correct? And when they come back to restart, there will be zero activation charges. So you can put one pause on and you don't get charged anything. If your account is frozen due to bad pay, those customers, if they wish to restart, would be charged the reactivation fee. So that's one of the two changes that happened today in the contract. Is any questions on that so far? No? Okay. So then carts. Carts will have trash carts and recycle carts. Will be given to each homeowner that subscribes to the policy, to the program. Yard waste will be using your own 32-gallon can or the brown paper bags. Additional carts are available for a fee, which is in Exhibit A, and on the summary chart, they're 2280 per cart, or 2580 for the trash. If you need, if we go through the initial startup and we get everything out there and somebody calls and says, oh, I need another cart, there would be a delivery fee to get additional carts. Okay? But there's also a 90, is it 90 days? 90 days from the initial delivery of carts, residents will have 90 days to change the size of their carts or add additional carts with no fee. Okay? The contract also walks through the little summary, walks through all the liquidated damages put forth to Waste Management to help protect our streets and our residents. And there's also the homeowner's responsibility. If we're asking for responsibilities from our vendor, we certainly can ask for responsibilities from our homeowners. If you have a recycling can and you contaminate that recycling can three times in a row, you will be charged a fee. Your first time, you'll get a sticker. Second time, another sticker. Third time, there'll be a $15 fee charged to your account. So we'll have a great educational process going on. And we know we have this problem because of our green bins. We know people think they can put anything in recycling, but as we don't want Waste Management to co-mingle and to contaminate the recycling, we don't want our residents to do that either. So we'll have an uphill educational process. If the bins are overweight repeatedly, there will be a $15 charge to the homeowners. If you take your, what is the weight, Chantel? Is it 90? About 90 pounds? Yeah, oh, come on up. Yeah, this is Chantel, sorry.
Hello, everyone. Chantel Forrest, Senior Account Executive, Public Sector for WM. The weight limit for a standard 96-gallon cart is 192 pounds.
Okay, a lot of weight.
Yes.
It's all the machines now, you know.
Yeah, it's primarily to protect the automated side-load arm that lifts the cart.
And all these, all these trucks have cameras. So when they dump, and if they do find contamination, that's where the residents will be held, or if somebody sees it as they're going up. But all the trucks are camera-operated now. All the services will be delivered the same day of the week, so trash, recycling, and yard waste. If it's Monday, if Monday is your day, all three trucks make the rotation on Monday. So there's one day, we'll be two days going through our township, won't we?
Yes, two service days.
Two separate days for the areas. And then part of our process is enrolling and establishing their account online. And again, that's part of our educational process that we're going to have to go through. As we walk through this, and you walk through the bids, it's roughly whoo, got it here somewhere. It's what, $40.56 for a trash per quarter? That's what they would be charged. With trash and recycle, if you wanted two cans, it's $69.81 per quarter. And if you wanted all three services, it's 93.44. Some of these prices is up to a 50% savings for some of our customers. Some people are paying anywhere from 120 to 140. Somebody on our board pays 160 a quarter. It's just, it's just all our different trash companies that we have rolling through our township. So not only does this, it eliminates multitudes of trucks going through our roads. It removes some of the pollution for all the trucks. It removes some of the microplastics coming from all the truck tires. The heavier the trucks, the worse they are. And it overall saves the community hundreds of dollars a year. Is the contract perfect? No, it's not going to. I think, does it cover 90, 95% of what we'd like? Yes. Are we going to have pain implementing it if we do it? Yes. We're not going to convert 2,800 homes, and even if we do 90% success rate, we've got 200 homes that are going to have a problem. And we're going to have to have a team to address those problems. And I think it's, we need to be aware that this is going to be a process going through it, but I would say by summer, which shall be ironed out, wouldn't you think?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Waste Management already has about 30% of our homes. They have 800 homes currently, so we have it's 1100?
Including, yeah, some of the HOA communities. Yes, yep.
And they have agreed with HOAs. Some of our HOAs operate that the HOA controls, collects the money from the homeowners, and the HOA pays the bill to the waste, to the trash caller. That as long as all those HOA members have the same services, whether they're all trash or all trash and recycle, they will continue honoring that process. So our HOAs maintain their consistency as they are now. We just have to roll them into the program. Go ahead, Karen.
So I just want to reiterate what, I just want to add to what Karen said and remind the board that when we undertook this, the RFP, we had strategic goals in mind, which were around environmental conservation, preservation of the roads, reducing costs for our residents, and having more leverage in negotiations with our caller, being able to actually advocate on behalf of the residents by having single contract.
Right.
And like Karen says. And like Karen says, we, it's, we're, the, the contract isn't perfect, but we feel that compared to the status quo, you know, compared to right now, which is decentralized, what,
Right now, we don't know where anything goes.
We, this contract is better than the status quo on those, on those strategic issues. And also the waste management is the preferred vendor because their proposal was.
Their proposal was the best proposal. They have the best infrastructure to support our needs and our growth. And the cost was the lowest. And they already have a third of our customers, or a third of our residents. Yeah.
I promise we will.
Yeah, right now, we don't know where our recycling, somebody could put recycling out, but we really have no control. We have, you have no control of where our stuff goes right now. We have, we have no leverage. We have no leverage if a truck goes through a neighborhood and everything blows everywhere or it leaks oil everywhere. And, and we've had that happen over in Carriage, Carriage Hills. And we have no leverage to do anything with that. Because we have eight or nine, we have eight, basically eight services, service vendors rolling through our township. So that's where we are right now. And we are still, the bid is higher than when we started. And we will address that when we go to the opt-in and opt-out program. There's two different ways of implementation of this program. And waste management wanted it one way, the township wants it another way. We never presented this program as a mandate to our residents. It was strictly always an opt-in. They have the choice. They have the choice of one service, two services or all three services. The other thing that happened today is we wiped out the reactivation fees, which was a win. We have a little loss on our food waste that you can explain what your attorney said.
Yes. Yeah, so originally we had two separate definitions, one for organic waste, the other for yard waste. In discussing with our senior legal counsel, because we are not providing two separate lines of collection services, we are happy to amend the definition of yard waste to include that food scraps can still go in yard waste. That hasn't changed. But at the end of the day, we are providing yard waste as the line of service and that an incidental amount of food scrap can go in. So we didn't want to include definitions that alluded to two lines of service that are separate, when realistically, it's all going to fall into the yard waste category. There's just the ability to add some things like eggshells and bones and, and things of that nature.
Nature.
There's no responsibility or liquidated damages if the owner holds food scraps in there.
Correct, yes. If, conversely, if a homeowner were to set out a yard waste bag and it was just food scraps, we wouldn't be able to collect that. But if they have predominantly yard waste and they, they toss some, some food scraps in there, that is totally cool with us.
Yeah, and I do think we should revise the terminology in V-ten and come out with a V-eleven before signing, should we approve it, just so we're all clear on that process.
Yep.
What's that? No, just when, when I get to ask questions, we need to deal, I don't like the wording.
Well, yeah, if you want to ask, I'll ask about that.
She has a question. Any other general questions to start? Or we'll go down the line and ask questions? And since Alicia just alluded, you get to go first.
Well, so I went through the contract and, and pretty much it looks like the, the majority of the things that I was concerned about are pretty much resolved. However, I don't care for the wording in, on page eight, it's the last paragraph. And service, service recipient billings, yeah, I'm using V-ten, even though I have V-eight, I mean, V-nine here.
That's, that's version ten.
Yes.
Everyone.
Okay, V-ten is version ten. Okay, okay. All right, so the thing, this sentence bothers me. The township will provide reasonable assistance to the company regarding company's billing and collections of amount due from the recipients. So I understand it goes on to say, you know, that may include timely notification of changes in recipients. But that part about which may include, I'm concerned that you're going to use that to hold the township accountable to be your collection agent. Recipients who don't pay their bill. And I need, I would like it if that was firmed up so that we are not, we're not in the business of that.
Yeah, absolutely. We can take that back to our legal counsel and we can get that tuned up for you. Yeah, there's no obligation for the, and we've had Karen, Karen.
That was in version five.
Yeah, we've, we've had considerable conversations about that. There's no expectation to the township. It really comes down to, again, when you have perhaps one person moving into or out of a location, a demo, things of that nature, where we, we seek the township's partnership in, in keeping up on some of those things. But yes, we have a.
You can tighten that language up. That would actually be.
Absolutely.
That's pretty much the, of the listed questions I had, that's literally the last one that hasn't been worked out.
At one point, it was in the contract that they wanted us to, we're not.
No, I remember.
The relationship really belongs between the resident and waste management.
Agreed.
The township is not in this relationship, other than negotiating the contract and getting some set prices for five years to protect the residents. But we are not in the,
Yeah.
the real problem solving. That is between the resident and waste management.
It tended to be one of your trash, trash talk sessions, so.
I'm sure there's more coming. Brad?
So my, one of the things is you had said that it was, it was always an opt-in, right? That's always how we presented it.
Correct.
Yet we're having potentially a second discussion about whether it's opt-in or opt-out. And then there's going to be a price difference because of that? Is that?
There.
I don't know. No, I think, I think we made it in our coffee chats. It, it's, it's both opt-in and opt-out are, are optional. But in our coffee chats, we were telling residents, it's opt-in. But in our conversations with waste management, we weren't, we were not using that language. And they were assuming their standard practice is just to sign everybody up. And then, and then if you don't want it.
You cancel it.
You call them and say, we don't, no, we don't want it, which is still not a mandated, it's not mandated. But, but you, but if you don't want it, you have to be proactive. We were telling the public that.
You have to call to get in.
You're proactive and if you don't want it, you don't do anything. And when that became apparent at, you know, Karen and I went in person for the first time to meet with Chantel and Doug, her boss at Waste Management. And when we realized that we were, we were going out in the public and saying something that was not their assumption. And they said, well, wait a minute. And I think that the cost differential is in part because it's a lot harder to do the opt-in, you know, to, to make eighty-five percent of the populace have to be proactive is, is more difficult administratively and operationally than their method, which is more efficient. So there's actually a higher cost to them.
To enroll.
Both the opt-in and opt-out are non-mandate, mean that it's not mandated. But I felt, I felt that it was our responsibility. We didn't, we didn't do, we didn't inquire about what their process was and they didn't inquire about. So maybe it was mutual, but anyway, we, we were making this up. We were both, both sides of the table were making assumptions.
Assumptions.
And then, and then it became clear and we all said.
We went, whoa.
No. We have version, version eight.
Yeah, yeah, version eight, version nine, version ten.
So this, and, and so I feel responsible for it and I, and I want to apologize to the board and to the public. But I think, you know, full disclosure, I think I'm still going to vote for it because it's still a lot cheaper than what I've, the, the fourth of the month is still.
It's still thirty-three percent cheaper or thirty-three percent lower than the closest bid.
Yeah, so it's, it's, they're still lowest bidder and it's still a lot. It, it's still accomplishing all these other goals. And I'm a waste management customer. I'm happy with waste management services in this way, I'm going to get it for cheaper. So, although I still think it's a good idea, but I do apologize for the last minute increase in.
We learned a lot on doing this.
Oh, I'm sure.
And if we're grounded five years, it will be much easier to re-up it or do whatever, if should we choose to.
And I could see how, you know, where we're telling the public, hey, it's going to be this way. And they're just assuming that it's going to be the other way, you're not there.
It's going to be the standard way. And I also want to say, Matt, you know, we were really guided a lot by Matt and Theo Aggerman. And then because the process took so long, we ran out of money.
Money to pay back. And then I had surgery.
And so then we didn't have Matt. Well, Theo went on maternity.
Delayed.
Matt, we didn't have money to pay.
Yeah.
So, so.
We got delayed.
We were, we, we don't have the, we didn't, we lost our expert.
Yeah.
And so anyway, again, just apologies for that last. But it's, I still think it's a good. And apologies to.
Oh, gosh, no worries, no worries. We've been on a review for eight years together.
These guys have been very patient.
And, and willing.
Yeah.
Very common, so, so thank you for that.
Of course.
All that.
Anything else, Matt? Or anything, Matt? Where'd that come from? Anything else, Brad?
Oh, good.
Okay, Michelle?
I'm up.
You're up.
All right. So I have a few questions for you. Does Waste Management have a single stream recycling system?
Yes, we do. So everything curbside is collected in the carts. It goes collectively into the hopper. And then, you know, we, we don't do source separated any longer. It's just not as efficient. So everything is collected from the cart, goes directly into the hopper and then is brought to the facility that we're directing it to.
And what number plastics do you accept? Do you accept one through seven?
We do not accept one through seven. We accept, this is a good test.
It's right back here.
I was going to say, it is in exhibit B of the single stream specifications. I want to say we collect two, three and.
No, you do not collect three.
Okay.
Do not collect three, four, six, seven.
Okay.
One, two, five.
We have recently expanded to collect plastic cups and paper cups though, as well. So that's a very, very, very recent.
Like just a little.
Yes, yeah. That was just, ah, I, I have materials that I can, I can get to you all. It was just deployed to us at the end of last week. So I can get you some specifics on that.
So if someone is not understanding recycling or what have you and they are putting the plastics that you do not accept, they're going to have the one, two, three fines stop picking up deal as well?
So what we do with, with that, I would, I would have to ask about the, I guess, how in-depth the technology on our truck goes. So we have the eight cameras on our trucks, some of which face into the hopper itself. So when a container is tipped, we utilize AI to scan that material. We can detect like big plastic bags, things like that. I don't know if that scanning technology goes to the depth of knowing the difference in the types of plastics that are going into the hopper with the, the short bit of footage that it has. So I can confirm that for you. But really, the things that we're calling out are those, those more obvious things that are really gunking up the waste stream, things like batteries, plastic garbage bags. But I can, I can get that information for you. That's a great question.
So there's no plastic, no film plastic at all?
Correct.
Is acceptable?
Correct.
Because I know that's where the other numbers of plastic, they, they utilize them and put them with film plastic and they're regenerated into things that we don't all love, but things a lot of people use, lids, straws, things of that nature. Do you ship your recycling overseas?
We do not, I believe, ship our recycling overseas. I can get with our marketing team. So the marketing team that we work with is really going after domestic deals first that are going to be the most impactful. Beyond that, I believe they do potentially look at some overseas, but because of the different regulations, it's not nearly what it, what it used to be. We are also opening our own material recovery facility within the city of Detroit. That's scheduled to be online at the beginning of next year. And the intention of that is to expand what we can accept, but also to expand the availability of recycled materials to the various manufacturers within the region. So I can, I can look into the overseas, but I know that our goal is domestic first.
Because that was a big deal.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, there are companies that want to pretend to do good recycling. But by pretending, they send it off, we don't.
Oh, yeah, no. Yeah, absolutely. I will tell you that any sort of co-mingling at WM, if we find out that a driver is co-mingling, so putting recycling with trash, yard waste with trash, whatever that looks like, that is a fireable offense immediately. We don't give warnings, that is, that's a fireable offense. We take it incredibly seriously. So making sure that material is, is going into the correct trucks and going to the correct destination is, is really just part of our commitments and values.
I still have three more questions.
Yeah.
You know what? You just gave up, you just gave me, you know, an insight. Is this why you have cameras on your trucks now? Are they new?
So we do, the trucks on the cameras are relatively new. We do have some that are internal, so like our drive cam, which does monitor just the safety of the driver. It's there not only to ensure that they are doing what they should be doing safely, but also from a liability perspective. And then the external ones, some of them do monitor just externally. Others are utilized for our smart truck capabilities, which allow us to record service events at each location, which ultimately is how we're able to communicate with residents directly when it comes to things like contamination or overages.
Would you want to piggyback a question?
Well, Chantel, you, you did previously answer for us about the internet and our customers. And we provided that in a report to the board, but I want to say that it was under ten percent. Is that, that's going from memory, but this was a few.
I can look into the specifics of that and I can get that back to you.
The answer.
Yeah.
We did put it in a report, but I.
And some of my questions may have been asked, it's just exciting to have someone actually present.
Absolutely, absolutely, ask away. No, this is great. I'm sure my boss is watching online with a tub of ice cream, so this is great.
I may not like facilitating the board meeting, but I like this part.
No, this is great.
So my second question is, and you, you answered part of it when you were in the beginning discussion with trustee Nolte, that you serve, you will service Dexter Township two days a week?
Correct.
So how many waste management trucks will be on the road to service our area?
We will have two trash, one recycle and one yard waste, I believe. I can, I can confirm that up with you. I don't have the numbers right off the top of my head, but I believe it's four trucks total.
And so this is a big one, how many stops?
Can I ask one of the, can I just clarify? Wouldn't there be one more truck for bulk pickup? The first, we plan in the contracts, it's bulk pickup is the first.
I'm just saying more weekly.
Well, this would be every month, every, once a week. What the first trash pickup of the month would be the bulk rate day. So we'd have a bulk rate truck, a bulk, bulky item truck going around, picking up the people that have scheduled.
Wait, are we, so that's confusing to me because I thought that we each get one bulk item picked up for free, but that it has to be arranged online.
Yes.
So, so it's not, like, I know the city of Dexter has a set day of the month.
Yeah, it's the first pickup of the month.
Okay.
Would be a bulk item.
So we are going to have that? Okay. I didn't, I, I guess I didn't notice that in the contract. I'm surprised that alluded me.
We asked for that because, because we are trying to reduce the wear and tear on the road.
Yeah.
Roads, we don't want that extra truck on the road every week we want it, just.
Once a month.
I just didn't see where it said once a month in the contract.
I think it says on the first, the first pickup of the month is the bulk item pickup day. But people have to schedule it themselves.
And they'll check that.
And then it, it allows them to develop their route. Sorry, Michelle, I just wanted to clarify there.
No, that's fine. If anyone has any comments with my questions, that's great. So I did ask how many to service the area so far, but there could hypothetically be.
Yep, absolutely. Some of it will depend too on demand as well. If we get to a point where depending on the recycle participation, if, if we have, you know, recycle participation beyond what we had planned for, we would look into adding an additional truck as well. So some of it with the opt-in program does have a little bit of flexibility when it comes to the number of trucks. But the minimum that we are anticipating is four.
And if people want to pay to pick up, so those are just out of the box too. Large item, I'll pay extra, come and get it.
Absolutely, yeah. So, yeah, that one bulk item can be.
That's again, first week of the month.
Yep.
And it is.
It is, okay, good. Yep. Yeah, so with that additional collection, when you have the, the once a month collection, if somebody wants to set out up to eight items total, they can. So that would include the one item that's built into the cost and then seven additional items. They just have to schedule and prepay for those online and they can set them out.
Okay, so next question, and this is. Okay, so, um, next question, and this is, um, in regards to microplastic from tires, which is absolutely logical. This is the same question. I'm just asking it two ways. One, where are your drivers coming from? Are, are they coming from down river? And, yeah, so how far are they traveling to get to us?
Yep, we have a hauling site, uh, in Whitmore Lake. So they would be, you'd be serviced out of the Whitmore Lake hauling site, which is located at 11655 Venture Drive. So they actually be coming south.
So that's my actual question, but I liked the, the question with the microplastic for mileage on tires. Does Waste Management have a local hub?
Yes. Yep, absolutely. We have five hauling sites within what we call the Motor City area. Um, so if it comes down to, again, let's say we have a truck down or, you know, something like that, we, we have a, a pretty well orchestrated, uh, group of hauling sites, all within close proximity, um, who can also help out in some of those situations. Uh, we have a robust maintenance program to ensure that things like that don't happen, but we all know that they still do. Um, so the closest area, uh, that folks would be coming from would be Whitmore Lake. Um, we also have a, our next closest site would be our Detroit West Yard, which is in Romulus.
And how many, uh, so how many stops until your truck is full hypothetically? So how many?
Oh, gosh, that is a great question. Um, I will have to confirm that and get back to you on that.
And I'm, I'm just wondering, just like hypothetically, and that goes with the microplastic for the tires.
Mm-hmm.
And do you guys frequent the Northfield Dump? You own the Northfield Dump, correct?
Northfield Dump. I'm not familiar with that.
Is it Northfield? Yes. Yes, thank you.
No, thank you. No.
Were you?
We own Woodland Meadows, which is in Van Buren Township.
Oh.
Yep, we also have a transfer station at our Whitmore Lake hauling site.
Interesting. Okay. Um, okay, that, those are my only questions, but I will say I'm definitely on the fence, and I will articulate that with, with the board. But one thing that I really liked about um, Waste Management was the food scraps. That was, that was a big seller to me. So that.
Yeah, maybe in a moment, Matt can speak a little bit to the food. You know, if that's important. It, it is important, but.
There's a lot that goes on landfill, but so many people don't realize the, you know, that, that is probably one of the biggest.
Oh, absolutely. There's so much opportunity. There really is.
Okay.
I just want to confirm. Now, now, this is not covered in the contract, but we did have discussions about, um, offering favorable pricing to non-tauntship residents on share, on roads like here on River Drive, where one side of the road is Dexter Township, and the other side is a different town.
McKinley.
And we, I think we all agree that we would defer that because it's, although it's not really our contract issue, but, but doing that might contribute to our goals.
Mm-hmm.
Because, because if we can get, if we convince all those people with these low prices to use Waste Management, then it would get all the other trucks off of those roads.
Yeah.
Um, and I just wanted to confirm that even though we all agree we were in it before that, then you guys are still.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Of course. Yes. Yep. Mm-hmm.
We have, also have an HOA that is divided between Dexter Township and Lima Township.
Of course.
And the HOA does central billing, so they've offered to extend that billing to the rest of the HOA houses not in Dexter Township because it is billed through a HOA located in Dexter Township. So confusing.
The things you uncover, right?
Really.
Yeah.
Inter synchrises that we get to.
Um, yeah, I, I just had, I, I just want to go back to a question that Shant- um, Michelle asked, not Shantel. I have a daughter named Shantel, which is.
Oh.
Yeah.
Why Shantel was on.
I learned that there are others. Not a lot of us.
But, so let's say, you know, I, I know what to put in, what plastics to put in my recycle, and my spouse throws in a couple of things that I don't see, and is dumped into your truck and taken a picture of. What happens? I get fined for each piece?
No, so it would be a $15 charge for that service event. So it wouldn't be charged per piece that we find.
Okay.
Um, you would have two opportunities prior to, um, and this is where we encourage.
Two opportunities to do what?
So you would receive essentially two warnings.
Okay.
Um, yeah, and we have, uh, we have a portal that will encourage folks to certainly utilize. They can still receive a paper invoice if, if that's what they like. Um, but through the portal, if they provide us with an email address, and they set their communication preferences, you can be notified anytime an incident like that happens. So it will notify you and basically say, hey, we saw something that's not quite cool to recycle. Um, it'll send you a reminder of what you can recycle, and it'll send you, um, a short video of the material being detected in the hopper. Um, so really trying to, you know, give folks the opportunity to see what went through there. Um, because, yeah, especially when it comes to, to partners and different folks in the house, if you've got kids or whatever that looks like.
Can happen very easily.
Exactly, exactly.
I, I'm only in favor of that if we, if we do a very robust educational campaign, because I have a very hard time sorting it out even right now, and I think I'm kind of on, on it.
No, absolutely.
I think I'm informed. So I'm concerned about that.
Okay.
Um, and how much of your, I mean, do, do you know what you get in fee? Like, how much of your income or is fees from?
In terms of contamination?
Yeah, contamination.
So contamination charges are something that are relatively new. Uh, this would be the first community that we roll out contamination charges to within the Motor City area. Um, it's something that is being rolled out in phases across the enterprise, and a lot of it, again, just has to do with, with the different regulations as it goes down state to state and area to area. Um, overages are also something residentially that we are working toward. It's not something that has been rolled out across the enterprise yet. Um, so it's hard to say what we're doing. Um, you know, the, the intention of those is not to be punitive. It is to be educational. And unfortunately, we found that we can give folks consistent reminders, but the reminder that hits their pocketbook is, is usually when they start to change behavior. Um, so that's why we try to incorporate a, a relatively small fee, but something that they don't want to see again.
Mm-hmm. And then what about recycle in the trash? I mean, let, if, so what, what, my instinct would be, when in doubt, throw it in the trash because I don't want to be charged a fee. Wh- what happens with that? Is that also detected? And is there any?
Not, no, unfortunately.
So people can actually throw recycle in their trash and get, get away with that.
They can.
Well, that's a good thing. If you're in doubt.
Right.
You want to put that in it because if, if the recycling is contaminated, it's ruined, basically.
Yeah.
So if you have a pizza box and you're not sure if it's recyclable or not, it's, it's, if you put it in the recycling, it's a, it's an environmental bad.
Right.
It's much better to, when in doubt, put the stuff in trash.
Yeah.
So I mean, I'm, I'm really in favor of that because I think we, we have environmental stewardship as a top priority in our budget plan and.
Right, but people.
Contamination of recycling is.
Yeah, I get it. People just need education about it. I mean, really, really robust education about it.
We have had major conversations on how to educate. Waste Management has offered help to us.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And marketing materials. Also, the county is in to help us, um, and Dexter Township. And we have got to use all our forces and all our mechanisms to go for it because we haven't talked about this, but should we approve it, we're kind of looking for an April 1st launch date.
Mm-hmm.
And we can go through more for the process once we decide if we go forward or not, but it's aggressive. And it, it takes us hitting the ground fast to get word out to all the homes and how to do it and what to do and get everybody established. So it's got to be very aggressive of education. And also, oh, yeah, no, that's a separate subject. Never mind.
I have some ideas about how to do that.
Yeah.
Education too. Some things that are rolling around.
Yeah.
I just wanted to, um, go back to the recycling. Can you elaborate why a company as large as Waste Management is not able to recycle film, plastic, or styrofoam? There are people that do reutilize the product.
Mm-hmm.
It's same as food scraps. It is three of the worst products to go into the landfill.
Yeah, I would have to get the, the back gate, like, the actual reasoning for that. I think predominantly it's because there's not a cost-effective way right now to be able to do those things. The facilities who are predominantly doing that are specialized facilities. Um, and the cost for us to do it, and then the cost for us to offer that to folks is just not competitive with, um, the rates that we're seeing right now. So, you know, we want to be able to offer solutions to people, but we also know that there's a market with which we have to operate in. And, uh, unfortunately, offering those kinds of services are, are just not cost-effective yet. It's something that we're certainly looking into. We're consistently revisiting, um, film, styrofoam, uh, food scraps. Those are all things that, that we are revisiting. Um, but here, particularly in the Midwest, um, we are still struggling to get folks to recycle correctly. So there's, there's a huge educational hump that comes with that, and I hope as we continue to educate folks and legislation continues to evolve, that we'll be able to offer those service offerings. But right now, it's just not something that we're able to offer within the Midwest market.
Any other questions?
Great, wonderful. Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Matt, can you give us a three-minute food waste talk?
Yeah, you're absolutely right. Food waste is a huge part of the waste stream. Um, average person generates about a pound of food waste per person per day. Um, and then about typically 30% of what's in trash, and we do this for a living. We take garbage trucks, empty them out, take a look at what's in there, thin film plastic, what's recyclable, but about 30% of what's in the trash is food waste. So that's going to landfills. They generate methane. It's 27 times worse than CO2 as a greenhouse gas. Um, and landfills are really not efficient ways, even though there's landfill gas collection systems. It's not a great way to make methane. So, or, um, so a big push, the state of Michigan has a 50% food waste reduction goal that's codified in the My Healthy Climate Plan. Um, so any, you know, I think you will be the second community in Washtenaw County that is able to collect some level of food waste as part of your program. Ann Arbor did it. They have their own 29-acre compost site. Typically, if it's 5 to 10% of the material, it just composts like everything else. And I think that's what Shantel and her team's worried about is just big blumps of food waste. It's just harder to manage, but, um, a little bit, your kind of plate scrapings and stuff like that, readily handable in most compost systems. So, um, we're helping the county look countywide at their material management plan, and food waste is a big part of that. So I would say that's the other thing that's coming with education. The plan's not finished yet, but the state goal is that there's, um, the county is helping all of its local units of government with education. Did that answer?
I think so. It's something we can achieve too. Start small.
And I can answer thin film and styrofoam if you want more on that.
Sure. Give us, Matt.
So the, the biggest challenge, and I know there's been one, so all of this material goes to a central facility, and their new facility in Detroit's going to be one of the most high-tech. Robots that are able to pick up, you know, polypropylene that normally would have gone into a mixed plastic, because it's hard to tell. Polypropylene's going to all be in one container, and that's valuable. And these guys, if they could collect it and put it in a bale where it's all together and sell it, they would do it. Styrofoam's super light. You put those peanuts in, as soon as that cart gets tipped over, those peanuts are in your neighbor's yards. So it's just.
Bomb pro.
Is that, okay. Um, what we're looking at is places like Meyer. You know, we got data from Meyer saying that each store on average collects about 30,000 pounds of thin film plastic. About two-thirds of that, it comes from Meyer. Like, the stuff they get is wrapped in plastic. They have to deal with it and they manage it. But about 9,000 pounds comes from residents, and I think that's going to be part of this education, the things that can't go into single stream. Where can we take them in the community? And, um, you know, there's more and more Dexter, you have some styrofoam collection, right?
Michelle runs the styrofoam, and we have the film, we have the film bin in the driveway that, or in the parking lot that goes to Chelsea High School for their contest, and Chelsea takes it to Meyer to go to.
So these are the partners that we're trying to kind of build and kind of come up with a cohesive, so everybody in the county knows where this stuff should go.
We're trying to find easier ways to move it.
I know.
It's a process.
It's a process. It's a challenge, but it, there's a great, great need.
Yeah.
Especially the amount of styrofoam that we collect every week.
Yeah.
Unbelievable, and it's just a handful of, of people that have knowledge about it, and every week we probably get five, six new people that have never heard of it.
Yeah.
And it's getting, now we're, we're looking for additional assistance.
And we should chat about that. The states have money for infrastructures, like densifiers and
Yep.
where it would make sense and.
You can melt it down to a 50-pound block.
Well, just, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions for me?
It's aren't that expensive, are they really?
What, densifiers?
Yeah.
Yeah, and again, I think the state is, there's regular infrastructure grants that come out.
I have all the information. We're, we're, this doesn't belong here, but bouncing around to nonprofit.
Yeah.
We need a home. That's what we need now, but it's, what we have going on right now is just volunteer-based. That's why you look at the big companies, and those are the ones we need to, you know, show this data. I mean, just in, you know, Dexter Township and the surrounding community of maybe 200, 300 people show up on Styrofoam Sunday for two hours, and we're collecting two 24-foot trailers full, and on top of it, we break it all down. So,
Right.
you know, we're able to really compact those trailers, and it's just, it's unbelievable. So on a city level, state level, all the United States level, it's terrifying.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
It's like the starfish, right? It starts somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your help this year, Matt. Oh, I had one question, Shantel. When your Detroit facility gets up and running, any problem with the, some of us getting a tour?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just putting it out there on the books.
Yes.
Karen, you're a little too excited about trash at this point.
Oh, I just love trash. I've had 18 months of trash.
You're just a little too excited about it for me.
I'll, I'll thank the other Karen for throwing this project my way when she was supervisor. Don't you want to do this?
Michelle was asking, do we, do we make this a discussion item this month?
We were.
Waiting for next month when I can comment.
I think Lonnie's been briefed on everything. I think he's up to snuff, and I, I hate to say this, but if we want to launch April 1,
I know.
There you go.
We gotta hit the road. We're already delayed.
Let's take a vote on it, and if it's, and if it's a tie, if it's tied, then we may need to wait, then we need, may need to table it from last month when we have the tiebreaker. It's an even number tonight. But I say, let's go ahead and take a vote and, and then decide.
We've held multiple meetings with him. He's asked his questions. I know pretty much where he stands. Um, but, yeah, if we're, if we're shooting for the April 1, we, tomorrow, we gotta hit the ground. I mean, as, as weird as that sounds, but it's just, you've got, we've got to allow Waste Management time to, they're gonna have to order over 5,000 carts. They're gonna have to deploy 5,000 carts. They're gonna have to build the routes. I mean, it's a lot.
Yeah.
So I think we can do a walk.
So, um, how would the board like to proceed? Do you want to now have discussion with the Board of Trustees?
Yeah, if you, yeah, sure.
Or make a motion?
If anybody, you want to have discussion?
Discussion, and then?
I'll make a motion that we, that we accept version, no, well, it'll be version 10 with the amendment on the, um, the tighten up the language on the thing and, um, is there something else?
Just, just to tighten up that. Tighten up the language on the township's responsibility with regards to the billing. with regards to the billing of the service recipients.
Yeah. Oh, and amend yard waste, yeah. And it's really, the amendment should just allow the supervisor the ability to sign that contract when we have that final version eleven, the amended version eleven.
So, restate your motion. What do you mean?
I guess I'll make a motion that we authorize the supervisor to sign version eleven contract when it comes in the next couple of days to have waste management as our single hauler for the Dexter Township, to accept the contract terms.
Well, second.
So, we have a support and a second. Now, I'll open it up for discussion to the Board of Trustees.
I feel like we've discussed this issue to death, okay? Eighteen months, how many trash talk sessions? I myself, I like that they have the cameras. Being a waste management user for my business, we had a situation where the cameras were very instrumental in rectifying an issue that we had. And they've had the cameras in... I mean, I've had waste management since 2021 at my office. And they've had cameras the whole time on those trucks.
I feel like I've talked trash. Nor anything I have to say.
You're gonna turn into trash.
Recycle me.
Right.
Go ahead, Michelle. You got a comment?
Absolutely. So, I'm going to be the one that's probably going to be the outlier. I so appreciate you coming. I've learned a lot. I've learned more than I thought I already wasn't know-it-all. But, and you know, in the last week, I've really researched waste management, especially what you want your implementation for the future. I've researched the robots, the cameras, the innovative way you want to recycle. I commend you for all of that. I personally, I'm a small business owner. So, I believe in a free market. I believe with choice, or I believe in our residents having a choice. So, it concerns me that, you know, taking a choice away from our residents, if they're not happy, what do they do? Now, all of a sudden, dispose of your garbage yourself. Competition. I'm a firm believer in competition. I... In five years from now, my concern is the lack of competition there will be. And I was mistaken. GFL owns the...
Prior to...
Yes, exactly, in Northville. So, I thought that was waste management. But when you get the two or three mega companies that, you know, rule the market, it concerns me that there's never any growth for a new local or a smaller established company. And I do take that to heart. My family, we generate very limited garbage. I'm the recycle person, right? Styrofoam, film. I look at all the plastics, see how they can be recycled. So, we make the decision to take it to our local transfer station. I know Perry, okay? So, I know these people that work in the community, and they live locally. They shop locally. They're employed locally, and that's important to me. So, while I commend the trustees for all of the work they put into this, I don't feel, especially now learning about the fines, it's going to be new to our residents. I mean, I could even see myself just rinsing everything out and throwing it in the can. Oh, my gosh, you know, it's not... Where at our local, we do have a local recycling authority, which you're familiar with, Western Washtenaw Recycling Authority, and they do take one through seven. But they offset the icky plastic to alternative. Not the greatest thing to return or to turn it into, but at least it has a second life. So, I probably will be the only one that I don't think that Dexter Township is ready. I mean no disrespect to our residents. I realize you're coming with a very... Your competitive rate concerns me, too. I'll be honest with that. It just seems too good to be true. And again, I don't... I'm not being negative by saying that. It's just, again, it gets rid of the competitive nature. So, that's all I have to say. But thank you for all the work you've put in. I appreciate you coming in. And I really appreciate how you're looking to, you know, run the waste system in the future.
I had a couple of things. Brad, do you have something that you want to?
Are you going to piggyback on that, or is it something?
Generally, a little.
Yeah, go for it.
A little yes and no.
Well, I don't want us to get... I mean, I just want to be cautious, cautious, because I think, you know, it's great. I'm not surprised by waste, but I don't want us to debate this because I agree with Alicia. I think we've talked and talked about this.
You don't have to debate me, but it is good to hear. It's really good to hear other people's thoughts.
And we don't need a consensus. We all need to.
Yeah. Heck, if we're ever going to all agree on everything, wouldn't that be a miracle?
But I just don't want too much back in the brush.
I'm just saying, the other thing that we have to keep track of, there's a certain percentage of our residents that do not want curbside and will not sign up and will continue probably to use our green bins out there. And those green bins, right now, are not going anywhere for now. That's another decision we have later this year of what we want to do with that. But I lost track of what else I was going to say. Oh, well.
People still have options.
People still have options, yeah. Yeah, you could take your trash to work. Brad's turn.
Yeah. So, my thing was with the whole tightening of the language, but then allowing the supervisor to sign it, when do we as a board get to see that reworked language before he signs it?
Well, we could wrench that.
Okay. I would just like to see the language before he signs it.
If we send it, give me comments. Reply only to one person, not lie to the group.
We could amend the motion to have it reviewed by the executive team for those two items. Which is the definition of yard waste and tightening of the language on the elections process that the supervisor has the authority to sign in consultation with the executive.
And we can copy. I think that's great.
I just want some of us to see that one.
So, can you take that as a friendly amendment to your motion?
Absolutely.
That this is a motion to authorize the supervisor to sign in consultation and after review by the executive team.
On those two points, on the definition of the yard waste?
And I accept.
Yeah.
Then if you are willing to accept that.
I have no problem with that.
Then I accept it.
Yeah. Does that sound fair?
And then that answer?
Yeah, no, I just...
We should share V-11 with everybody. I'm just saying, if you have comments on V-11, just send them to Lonnie. Don't respond to everybody.
Just the supervisor, and then he signs it, and then some, you know, any of us sees the language, it's like, well, that's not what we meant, you know? I mean, I'm not saying that that would happen. Nobody can just...
Opt-in, opt-out.
Right.
I get it.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Laura?
No, I am disgusted. I have disgusted enough. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to do a roll call vote on this one. If you're in favor of the single hauler trash contract to be signed by Supervisor Scott, please verify by saying aye. If you're for, nay. If you're not. Trustee Sanders?
Aye.
Trustee Sikenga? Trustee Nolte?
Aye.
Trustee Abbott?
Aye.
Pressurer Metz?
Aye.
Clark Stambulalies, nay.
The cheese stands.
But don't put it in the recycle bin.
Yeah, don't put it in the recycle. Put it in the yard waste.
All right. And I do want to thank Chantel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Theo, if you're watching. Is he listening?
Yeah.
Great job, everybody. This was... I'm Tom Hamech.
Yeah.
I feel that we made a deliberative decision and a lot of work went into it.
I'll say this topic started back in 2015, way before us. They put it on, and they couldn't do it. It was a long time. So, now we kind of have to decide opt-in, opt-out, second part of the program. Yeah. Life is never as easy as that, is it? So, opt-in versus opt-out. I think we've kind... I think everybody understands it, don't we? The... Go ahead, Karen.
Well, I wonder if we want to have that. I mean, you have the room, but I think waste management feels that the opt-out is the better and more... A better approach, but it's not what we were telling people. So, I think it would be good for Chantel to be able to explain why she thinks of that.
Yeah, thank you. So, we obviously have done many deployments over many years. My boss, Doug Reams, has thirty-one years in the industry, so he's seen far more deployments than I have in my short three years. But resoundingly, what we have found when we are working with preferred hauler contracts is to deploy everything to everyone. And then if there is a grace period, give folks a period of time to allow them to say, this isn't for me. Again, going back to what Trustee Sikenga said earlier, it really comes down to operational efficiency and comes down to a little bit of human nature, I think, too. We found that folks, when the accountability is put on them to opt into something, there's a lot of stragglers. And then there's a lot of work that has to be done in the backend because if any of them are like me, they wait until the final hour of the final day to opt into something, and they might miss that window. By giving folks the opportunity to opt out, that just allows us to cover a broad stroke, to be as efficient as possible with operations. And then if folks decide that that's not the right thing for them, we can take those carts away.
I think the risk for the residents is that if they don't sign up in time, then they lose the cart. So, if you sign up during the initial sign-up period, you get a free cart, basically. And if you sign up later separately, you don't get a free cart.
There'd be a delivery fee.
There would be a delivery fee.
We're risking people not signing up timely, and then they have to be...
Right. But on the other hand, asking people to opt out, what about people who are snowbirds and might not be here to know that they need to opt out? I don't like that. The opt-out really bothers me.
Okay. And as we've talked about this program, with the opt-in version in my head, which, you know, sometimes is good and sometimes isn't, that we would run it almost parallel to what we do for the Park Pass program. Put it on the website. Residents go in, and they sign up. They can sign up for their level of service, trash, trash recycle, trash recycle yard. They can check boxes. And we collect all their data, and we say, okay, on this day, whatever day that is, just like we do the Park Pass, October 31st was our deadline. And here's your deadline, that if you enroll by this, you're getting free cart delivery. And we're rocking and rolling. And we take all that data, and we send it to waste management. The other thing I like about that program is we're running, what, twenty-one hundred emails right now? Twenty-two? About twenty-one hundred. If we get our residents to opt in, and we expect fifteen percent do not prefer curbside, we would collect more emails and be able to communicate with our whole community at a snap via email and newsletter. Which is, we've improved greatly in our communications with our community. And if we're talking our educational process, if we can get those last seven hundred emails, we can really talk to our community. And I think we've seen the impact of that over the last three years as we've grown the process, and it sure would be nice to finish it.
At the end of the day, I will say, we're amenable to either option. But in our discussions, you know, we wanted to advise them of the best practices, and what we have seen has been the most successful, having done both of them in the past. But ultimately, this is your community. And, you know, we've talked, I think, through both processes extensively. So, you know, WM is amenable to either. We just wanted to advise of the best practices that we've seen and what we've seen success with. But ultimately, whether it is an opt-in or an opt-out, we're on board, and we're happy to be here.
Is it the same process for the thirty percent that already are with you? It would be the same process, whatever?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I agree with Chantel. I mean, I'm inclined to want to make life easier for the eighty-five percent than the fifteen percent. But, you know, I mean, I agree with Chantel. I know Lonnie prefers... And it sounds like Alicia has... Karen, Lonnie, and Alicia all prefer.
I have a question. If we do the opt-out, do you just give all the houses two carts?
We do.
And then if they choose not to do recycling, you have to go around and pick all those up?
So, there would be a date. There would be a period of time similar to requesting a different cart size where folks would be able to say, you know, I'm not interested in this program, or I need a different cart size. Once that period of time closes, we then go out again and kind of do another fell swoop to take care of everything in one so that we're not running around the community doing onesie-twosies. Yeah.
I just see a problem getting all of our houses two carts, and people going, uh-uh, I only want trash. I mean...
So, does everybody prefer the...
Does everybody understand opt-in, opt-out?
Prefer the opt-in. Nobody prefers the opt-out.
I'm not sure I understand totally which one is which.
I know the word.
It varies. Let me give... Let me give a... Okay.
Are we deciding it now?
Yes. So, if we go opt-out, which is waste management's preferred, we take our database, we take our taxpayer database, which is public information. We're not sharing anything.
Right.
And we shoot that all over to waste management.
Right.
And that's it. They have our... All of our houses.
And they start everybody.
And they start everybody.
That's the opt-out.
That's the opt-out.
Let's stop calling it opt-out.
Okay, let's call it waste management preferred. Yeah. And then the homeowner has to call waste management and say, I do not like this program. I do... I got two carts delivered to my house. I only want one cart.
Well, not...
Yeah, because waste management...
They don't have to call waste management.
They have to establish their account online or call. If they don't want any curbside, they still have to call waste management.
They would have to notify us, yes.
Yeah, they have to know.
Yeah.
Okay, so our...
But we could do it through an email to the township or whatever, like we do.
Yeah.
We could run that part of it just...
But at that point, we don't get those emails, either.
So, the other way is that we call... Our residents call and sign up?
Yes. Either call and sign up, go online or sign up, or we run a program just like the Park Pass. We put something on our site that enroll a curbside trash service on our website.
Right.
Essentially, in Karen's preferred, we'll call it Karen's if I'm Chantel. Karen's preferred.
That's your preferred.
That's how we... That's how I've talked about it.
If you want trash collection, you have to...
Sign up for it.
You have to sign up for it. And Chantel's preferred, if you don't want it.
Right. Okay, now I got it. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think I would...
Okay, so I'm processing this.
I think I agree with the Karen version.
Okay, so let's say we go in the opt-in version. I would prefer the residents opt in, say, hey, I would like this service or not.
Yes.
But are you saying if people don't... They have to either opt in or opt out?
No.
No.
We don't have to contact you. So, us personally, that generate maybe a bag of garbage every three or four weeks, right? So, if we don't want garbage pickup, and I know my plastic is going where I believe it needs to go with the green bins, I don't have to be concerned that I didn't contact you, and I'm just going to get a bill from waste management?
With the opt-in or the opt-out?
With the opt-in.
The Karen's...
With Karen's preferred. You don't do anything. You don't get a bill. You're done. No action. If you're on curbside recycling, curbside, any curbside service of any level, you do nothing.
Yes, correct.
Okay. I agree with that.
If you want one of the three services or all two or three of them, you have to contact.
The other one seems too forced.
There you go.
Well, I don't think... It's just how we didn't position... Like, that probably should have been one of the things we talked about at the very beginning of the conversations, but we didn't. one of the things we talked about at the very beginning of the conversations, but we didn't. And so everything we've presented in coffee chats and everything has been an opt in program. So I, I think it would be upsetting if we switched.
And I don't really think we even need, I have a sense of the board. I think everybody prefers Karen's process. And I think, and, and we should just say, okay, that's what we're doing. I don't even think we need a motion of the board.
Yeah.
We have a sense that that's the board's preference. We know that it's Lonnie's preference, um, so let's just go.
Do we feel that way? What about Brad?
Opt in?
Yeah.
Yes, that's the way we talk about it to everybody, that's the way.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we're opting.
Awesome. Multi-deployment.
Yeah.
Said, either way, WM's amenable either way. So, yeah, we'll, we'll get a phone call scheduled, we'll talk through the logistics. But, like I said, we're on board either way.
Okay.
So.
So our next step is to get V eleven, get it to the supervisor and then we're cruise and, uh, off we go.
Alrighty.
Alrighty, well, we finished that. We will move on.
Believe it or not.
Sorry Karen, I heard it's my other.
Oh, no, April, it wouldn't be deployment. Deployment happens way before that, but service starts.
I, I, I agree. I want to reiterate something that Matt said, which is, we're only the second community in Mashaw County that's doing uniform food waste recycling. And it was time Karen, today, that I, you tried to do food waste recycling in the Temple Gardens for University and, and which has a massive amount of food waste and we couldn't pull it off, because like it was too complicated. So I think it's that right there, it's just a figure, right?
Yes.
It all depends.
Definitely.
Thank you, you guys, thank you, Matt. Thank you, Chantel.
Yeah.
Now the real work starts, Sam.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. Good? It's a good one or not?
I'm glad we're, glad we're not doing that.
I'm sure we're going to hear both ways.
Well, it's weird and.
First thing people fall and set it up has a lot less impending consequences.
Yeah, I think so. Now everybody's going to leave.
Close session, so we're going to kick them out anyways.
All right, the next item on the agenda will be a discussion item that will, was relabeled A as a change to the agenda of going into closed sessions.
I'll make the motion for going closed set, move to discuss the purpose of property.
I second.
You have a motion and a support? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Do I need to invite Barry to stay, Janice?
I'll second it. Aye.
Aye.
Did we lose our audience?
Yeah.
They're gone.
I guess so. They're public.
Alrighty.
So discussion. I was actually thinking that this would be a decision. Well, so, so here's where we are. I have provide, you know, I believe that we have a vision, vision, values and pillar statement that everybody is satisfied with. And I think we also have a list of things that we're planning to do to contribute to those pillars. And everybody has raised their hand and we have kind of a frame out for a roadmap. What, I, I want to put out there to the board that I think we need to decide. So I don't recommend that the, that the roadmap be part of the published strategic plan. We talked about that last month. And I actually would recommend, having spent a little bit more time with the action items, I would recommend that we approve a strategic plan through the pillars. So I'm looking at up through, uh, at pages, uh, fifty-four and fifty-five of the package. And I'm really just looking at the first page of the strategic plan and then the second through the pillars. And that we, we leave the action items out of the published plan. And I have a couple of reasons for that. One is because the action items, they're not using transcendent, transcendent language. I mean, they're very tactical, right? So, so the, the, the strategic, typically a strategic plan that gets published, it's there to help the, the community understand the strategic direction that we're going and to get people kind of excited and to kind of buy into our big priorities. But when our action items, and, and the action items are, the action items as we've written them, they're not, they're not using that kind of lofty language. And we may find, as we start digging into any one of these action items, maybe it doesn't make sense, you know? I mean, maybe, for example, uh, I don't know. I, I mean, maybe we have, we, maybe we don't need to do blood drives anymore because the Montessori school decides to do blood drive, or whatever, you know? So, so things change in the real world that make some of the action items not make sense anymore and other actions might emerge as being important. And if we codify these action items, which are quite tactical, into a published plan, then we may be kind of committing ourselves to actions that really in six months, we say, this doesn't make sense and we don't really want to do this. And, and also, I, I mean, basically, no one ever publishes who's doing what and on what specific timeline, because you can always have personnel changes. And so, 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 but, but in our case, I would extend that to the action items too. So I think that we should have a motion of the board to approve the, the vision, mission, values and pillars and to publish those as our published strategic plan. And then I think we should decide as a board how we want to flesh out the roadmap. I don't necessarily recommend that we do it here at, at board meetings because again, because it's pretty tactical. I typically, you would hand it, I would, as a, in my role as consultant at this point, I would, I would hand this now to the executive, you know, whoever's the executive. And I would say, okay, here's what everybody said that they're interested in working on. Here's the timeline, so you can see that, you know, some people raise, in some cases, a lot of people raise their hand, in other cases, not very many people did it and maybe the timelines don't make sense or whatever. And kind of let Lonnie, so we could, I would recommend that we charge Lonnie or charge Lonnie with advice from the executive team on, um, finalizing, working with all of you guys to finalize the roadmap, including who's going to be the lead, who's going to, who's going to assist and then what the timeline is going to be. And then I further recommend that we revisit it. We come back to, you know, every quarter or every like six months or something, we direct the supervisor to bring the roadmap back to the board and just report out to us on what, on the status and how, and who's doing what and, and whether there are things falling behind or things that we want to cross off or whatever. But for tonight, I don't necessarily think we should dive into. I think, I think, I think that's a little bit of sausage making and it doesn't need to happen at a board meeting, because it's not really at a policy, it's not policy stuff, it's, it's.
Agreed.
So I don't know what you guys think.
I, I really had to say.
I agree.
Yeah, I, I, are we discussing this now? I mean, this is a discussion of it.
Yeah, but I don't necessarily want to discuss the roadmap items. I mean, although.
I know.
I didn't want to give you a chance to say, because I know, because I know Laura, Laura's feedback on the roadmap didn't get called into the, into the roadmap and I know she's interested in working on more, more items.
Yeah, I just.
She's listed as.
Right, I just wanted to say that page fifty-seven doesn't, I couldn't keep up with the timing and I'm, and I apologize, it's not my, it's not, I know Karen was working hard on this and I missed the deadline for stating what I want. And, and I really do want to work on some of these things and feel very committed to it. And, and right now it says I'm doing zero, so I, I never like that in the packet. And I intend to, you know, I'd really like to work on, yeah, I'd really like to work on community, um, conversations and coffee chats and those kinds of things, um, with some, you know, with other people. So I'm just, I, and, and there may be other things I want to work on. I'm interested in the, in some of the planning commission issues and stuff that have come up. So I just want to say that this doesn't reflect my desires, yeah. Right. Yeah.
And I also want to just add that it also looks like Lonnie's doing a lot, but that's because of his role as the executive, as the, you know, as the executive director and effect. And so it just means he kind of has to sign off on a lot of stuff, but he's not doing, he's not, I, his workload isn't as heavy as it, as it looks like it would be. I think Fletcher and Sam have pretty substantial workloads, but that makes sense because there are full-time employees and that's what I would expect. So I would expect that Fletcher and Sam would be spending the most time on these items. Lonnie would be overseeing, because they are, they report to him, he would be overseeing all their work and he would be listed on, on their items. So do you guys like that idea? Do, what, what do you think about publishing the plan only through the pillars?
Yeah.
I think that's a distinction.
I don't think we list on our projects.
Right. Right.
Because they can come and go and change and.
Nobody has to know how the magic happens.
Want to know that it's happening.
Right.
That's right.
Well, and I think that our residents, you know, I know that our residents are smart enough to know that we are doing this stuff, because they're the recipients of all the good that comes out of this. So I don't think they have to have every step in detail.
I think we shouldn't act on this without the supervisor present though, because the supervisor.
Right, he's big responsible.
So I think we should have an agenda item next month to, of approving the strategic plan.
A month isn't going to change it, really.
We will not display the roadmap. When it goes to the board for approval next month, the roadmap won't be. From action items down, so from, you know, the middle of page fifty-five on down, that won't be in the package next month, because that's not going to, the board won't only only approve it. And so thanks, everybody, for, I mean, you know, everybody's interested in working. You know, I've, I've gotten here lots of ideas and, and excitement about the different tasks that everybody's working on and it's, it's exciting to hear that, that there's so much interest in working on this. One other comment about the action items was that there is this very broad one, which is that we're going to try to make our, our partner, partner entities more effective. And that means all of you need to start thinking about your committees that you're on and, and the boards and committees that you're serving on for Dexter Township, whether they need, you know, so CACA, WWRA, whatever, you know, do, what, 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 or DAFD in my case, like what, what needs to happen to help those, those organ, what can we do to help those organizations provide better services to our, to our? And that is not fleshed out in the roadmap at all right now, so.
Right.
So everybody has to think, thank you, Kat, and, and what you talk.
Cool.
Good.
Yeah.
We will stay quiet until next month.
So you're saying the action items will not be present in the next?
In the publish, yeah, in the, in the, in the strategic plan for approval by the board next month.
I guess it's a tall tale, but it is exciting, especially for residents to see that we're thinking about, you know, these actions versus just the pillars and just, you know, our strategic plan, vision, values, actually to say, hey, because of the vision, because of the mission, because of the values, because of the pillars, this is now what we're considering. This page I can see not having or dates or anything like that.
Even some of the actions, it's kind of nice to leak them out, sorry, community, but i- if you say today, you're going to work on a cell service, you're going to get a ton of phone calls of, when am I going to have better cell service? And it, it's a long process. It's a lot that happens on the, behind the scenes. It's not like it won't be talked about, but.
That's true, but that can still have conversations going. And when people call in and you say, well, it's going to happen, but it's going to take time and then people are able to talk to people. So when it came, I mean, just today, my insurance guy, he was, he's one of the last people on Waterloo Road to get broadband. Very, very excited.
From Tanglewood Trail?
Mm-hmm.
Or is he up on Jeanette?
Tanglewood, I believe. That's, that's fine, however.
Yeah, they should come back to the board. I'm just talking about like the, the plan that gets into a fixed kind of static document is, you know, and looks pretty and has all the nice pictures and all that. It doesn't include the action items, but the action items should still come back to the board for discussion every quarter or every six months or whatever, whatever cadence, you guys. I mean, for, for most of my clients, I say, the executive, the, the management team should discuss once a month, the status on the, on the, of the status of the strategic plan roadmap. But I think once a month might be too much for the township board meetings. But maybe every quarter or every six months or something, we get a status report from everybody on their strategic plan.
Isn't that kind of what our updates are? When we write our updates, isn't that kind of like an update of whatever project you're working on? I mean, that's why, what I do with the board packet updates, I just update whatever projects are working.
I mean, I like the, um, the time. I mean, I like the format, because it's, but yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I'll be honest, I love the structure and this, this idea, I think it's perfectly done. And it just shows the commitment of, it might not be done tomorrow, but this is what we're working on for the community. And I just think, first, I mean, we see the residents that come in day to day and most, every one of them, you know, compliment or they're like, yay, we love what you're doing. And they have something to say about something and that's pretty wonderful.
And you can see also that there's a twelve or five years, you know, not, I'm going to do too much next year, but good, that's probably.
Well, perfect, any other comments or discussion for the Dexter Township Strategic Plan? Okay, so we'll move into questions and answers for staff and Dexter Township Committee reports. I just want to point out, because of trust, or, excuse me, supervisor Scott's absence, you have a, you have the, oh goodness. So you have the draft twenty-twenty-seven budget book that is in front of you this evening. That was in his report, because he's not here. I just wanted to remind anyone, unless you've forgotten, that it's sitting in front of you.
It's.
Didn't know it was there. Didn't recognize that.
Yes.
See it.
Or why.
I remember those last year.
Does anyone have any specifics they'd like to report on for their, their week or their reports?
Sam does.
All right, I guess we'll start with Sam.
Hey, thank you, Clerk Stambulellis. So I just wanted to touch on really quick, just because of Lonnie's absence, the draft of the budget book. So it's an evolving document. So as you'll see in the table of contents, there's some documents that we're still waiting on that will be included in, during upcoming meetings. So just as a reminder, I put a little sheet out for everybody too. So just bring your budget books with you, um, for every meeting up until March, when the FY twenty-seven budget is approved. Just because again, we're going to be including additional documents in there and we. Just because again, we're going to be including additional documents in there and we wanna make sure that you guys have everything available. The second thing that I wanted to make note on is just from my. Report regarding the, uh, the Park Pass program. I just wanted to let the board know that I've had an overwhelmingly positive response to the program. And so, I wanted to take this opportunity for. Letting you guys know what a, what a great program this is, just hearing back from a lot of residents. They've been very, very happy with it. And just to let everybody know that we will be getting the passes this week. This is all going to go out and in the loop, so the residents are aware of what's going on. But we'll be, we'll be getting the passes. We'll be sending them off to the mailhouse. And then that's when residents should start receiving them towards the end of the month. And also just an update that is in my report to let everybody know that the participation this year. Increased by nearly twenty-five percent. So, that's a pretty substantial increase, all things considered. I do want to let the board know that I think it would be incredible to continue the program the following year. And I, I do expect that we'll continue to see substantial growth a- as it's been growing year after year.
I'll also say the passes, when they get their new pa- if they get their passes at the end of November, December, they can start using them now, like they're good.
Yes.
They're good immediately all through the next year, so people don't have to like hold on to them and then switch them January.
Yes, they can access the park in December and take advantage of that, so.
They're active right away.
Yes. Did anybody have any additional questions about the Park Pass program?
We continue to be Hudson Mills' largest customer.
I bet. They probably love us.
Yeah, they kinda do right now.
Well, do you mind if I tell them about, uh, about the interest at that?
Oh, yeah, please, go ahead.
So, this, because this has to do with the Parks Pass program. At the trustee retreat. We had an engagement session called. Promote what you love about your township. And. They gave us ninety seconds. And it just happened that the new vice president of MTA and the executive director were sitting with me at my table with one other woman. And. I knew immediately while they were describing what we needed to do, what I wanted to promote. So, I promoted the Parks Pass program. And I couldn't believe the amount of people wanting to know how we did it. The MTA president and the executive director of MTA. Were very interested. They were just, they, they spent quite a bit of time questioning me and asking me. And they were really impressed. That our township is doing this. I just want you all to know that.
You gave it a good elevator speech.
Apparently.
That's great.
Apparently, so yeah.
Yeah, a lot of other municipalities are also kind of catching on to what we're doing and have been inquiring about it as well.
And I'm working with Hut- I'm not working with Hudson Mills. Higher up than Hudson Mills, was it Clinton, Clinton Metro Parks, to try to take. The pass numbers that we distribute and be able at the end of next year to get an idea of how many. Visits to Hudson Mills or Metro Parks that we generated. So, we may buy eighteen hundred passes, but do we generate twenty-five thousand visits? So, hopefully next year we'll have a number of visits. Which. I think is a great thing to help promote.
Do they scan that?
Well, they have to write a new program. Yeah, when you, you go into the park, they scan your passing, so yeah.
But they're, I'm trying to get them to write a program that they can track all our pass numbers to tell us how many visits. We're generating. Yeah.
Cool.
It's a process. Dollar process.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you, everyone.
Sure, Sam. Ready to do the same thing on single hauler?
Well, I also know that you did a lot of work.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments anyone would like to make?
I'm sorry, are you going around? I mean, what do you, because I have something wrong to share with the board.
Sure, let's go in order. Trustee Nolte?
Um, just broadband's closing out. Hopefully by the end of December, we can knock that five-year project off our books. We only have Tanglewood left to do. Jeanette Drive is done and Tanglewood should be done next month, so that will be good. Don't think of anything else.
Just that it's getting that time of year again for. Another tax item. Um, so the tax.
Noted in about single haul.
Yeah. When you send out taxes.
Well, then since they're already leaving.
Oh, oh, they're already.
On their way.
The, the, the multiple parcels have already been. Put on the side. They're getting posted tomorrow. And then all of the singles will be going to, uh, front tech there this week. So, yeah, we're all set for that. Getting back to visit.
Wow.
We in the Parks Office are getting ready for a slower time for a few months, couple of months. No. I deserve this.
Actually.
Um, so. But other than that successful election, I do wanna point out that Dexter Township was the first. To tabulate our election results to the county. And no one, they bet on all of the townships. Of who would be first. No one voted for Dexter Township.
They totally underestimated it.
They absolutely did. So, um, thought that was very exciting. We did, um. We were able to generate a few new election workers, couple of them young, which is wonderful always. And. Definitely still always hiring for election workers. And we should be settling for the reimbursement through the. WISD within the next two to three weeks for reimbursement.
Well, Sam and Lonnie and Donna Bethany and I are gonna be meeting with, um, with. Representatives from the city of Dexter and Webster Township on Friday. To discuss the interlocal agreement for fire services. It's something that, that I, it's, this is a little committee that I initiated because when I took over as chair. I interviewed all the board members and everybody said they were dissatisfied with the interlocal agreement. And. But. Dexter City kind of took over. Running this little committee because they in particular, they have a narrow interest in talking about the, the. The allocation basis for the, the operational cost of DAFD. And that's really what they wanna talk about. But I think we want to have other things. So, so this is just the very first step on that. But ultimately, if we wanna recommend changes to the interlocal. Agreement or if we wanna recommend a different governing structure, then this will all come back to the board of trustees. So, you guys should expect that we're gonna start updating you pretty regularly on the topics that we're gonna be discussing there in operation. Um, the cost of DAFD has, has gone up. Significantly because of a policy decision. By the DAFD board to. Have two firefighters present at three fire stations twenty-four seven. So, when it was created, it was only one fire station. And then Webster Township built a fire station and then. Dexter Township built a fire station. And then they decided, then. Before I joined the board, they decided that one firefighter. That it, that they didn't wanna have one firefighter, only one firefighter present. They wanted to have two firefighters present. And so, that. Really increases the cost. And then the other thing is that they're all, they're all represented by the unions. So. So, there was a collective bargaining agreement that, that resulted in significant pay increases. And so, the costs are gonna go way up. Dexter City is bumping up against their headway caps and they don't have a dedicated funding source. Where, where we have a millage and so does Webster Township. So, it's, so it's a little bit complicated. And there's a lot to unpack. And the very first of those meetings is on Friday. And then you guys might remember that we talked about the fire ordinance and had presentation and. And Ruth came and answered questions. So, then that has to come back to the board for approval. But we'll pick that up again now that we've got through the strategic plan in single hauler and all that. I'll, I'll probably break the fire ordinance back.
Thank you. Um, I am working on, but I, I, I don't wanna, I'm kind of on the save the date. Sam and I and. Alicia, we were working on another community conversation, a third one. On the topic of immigration. And it would involve a guest speaker who is Dr. William Lopez. From the School of Public Health at U of M, who has written two books now and studied. The impact of increased immigration enforcement on the public health. Of not only the targeted community, but everyone. And, um, he's really a wonderful person and a great speaker. And I, he's already said he wants to do it. We just have to. Agree on the date. Right now, we're looking at December ninth. Six o'clock to eight thirty, or eight, probably six to eight, something like that. But I don't wanna. It's not in stone yet, cause I've gotta, you know. Turn, you know. Make, confirm. Okay, so, but it's coming and it will be advertised in the loop. It's Tuesday, December ninth.
Six and seven.
Hopefully, yeah, it's not, yeah, I've gotta get that commitment. He's already said he would do it, but we don't, we haven't agreed on the date yet. So, it'll be, but my, my goal is to have it be. Well before, uh, the holidays. Yeah. So, it doesn't run into that. People have time to come out. Yeah.
Janice? Anything else? Anyone would like to address?
I was gonna make an emotion to adjourn.
I was gonna do that too.
Seconded it?
Everyone.
Everyone.
We don't need a motion.
I hereby call this adjourned.
There we go.
Bye, kids.